This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
Acting City Attorney Hockeluk.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan is excused.
Correct. Do you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. The minutes for February 21st, 2024 Administrative Meeting, February 26th, 2024, March 6th, 2024, March 3rd, 2024, March 20th, 2024, March 25th, 2024 have been received. Any comments or questions from the commission? Minutes will stand as submitted. Presentation. Confirmation Officer Justin Gibson and Officer Seth Montgomery. Chief Petty, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening.
Tonight I have two officers that have successfully completed their one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of the probationary period and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. And if the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the commission to confirm these two officers tonight. Prior to having the commission vote on these officers' confirmation, and if I may, I'd like to introduce them and give a brief background for the commission.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Our first officer, Officer Justin Gibson, grew up in South Louisiana. He started working in law enforcement in 1991 as a patrol officer in a city similar to Helena. I don't know if I should say this next sentence, but because he was 19 years old at the time, his mother had to buy his duty pistol. That was in Louisiana, so. Officer Gibson obtained his master's degree in criminal justice from Loyola University, New Orleans in 2005 and moved to Montana in 2006. Justin worked as a game warden until last year when he was hired by the Helena Police Department. Justin has been married to Natalie for 23 years and they have a 15-year-old son Sean, who is also born in Helena. Justin has been incredibly happy working in HPD for the last year and he looks forward to many years to come. Next, I'd like to introduce Officer Seth Montgomery. Officer Montgomery was born and raised in, I want to say Lima, Montana, Lima, Montana, as I was just corrected. Following his graduation from Lima High School, he joined the Marine Corps as an infantry machine gunner. Officer Montgomery was assigned to the First Battalion, 7th Marines, and deployed to Helmand, Afghanistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom and to Al Assad, Iraq in support of Operation Inherent Resolve. He was honorably discharged in March of 2017 and moved to Bozeman, Montana, where he started college at Montana State University and later met his girlfriend Paige. In May 2022, Officer Montgomery graduated with honors from Montana State with a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering Technology and a minor in Building Energy Systems. While working as a mechanical design engineer for an engineering firm in Bozeman, he again felt a desire to serve. Officer Montgomery shifted his career goals and began pursuing a career in law enforcement. Officer Montgomery is grateful to the Helena Police Department for giving him the opportunity to service community once again. With that brief introduction, and if I may, I'd like them to say a few words, address the commission and introduce any guests they may have.
Please, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Officer Montgomery. I appreciate this opportunity to stand before you today. Back when I first started dating my better half back there, Paige, right there. In about 2020, I started coming to Helena more and more often and you couldn't hardly get anywhere without seeing a "back the blue" sticker, "back the blue" placards everywhere. And as I finished up my degree and graduated, and the more and more time I spent in Helena, I realized this is the community that I want to be a part of and this is the department that I want to work for. I'm grateful for the opportunity. Like I said, thank you Mayor Collins. Thank you City Manager Burton. Thank you to the commission. And thank you Chief Petty for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, I'm Justin Gibson. My wife Natalie is in the back. And yes, this has been an incredible experience for me the last year. The department is a wonderful place to work, very supportive people, as you can see some in the back there, wonderful supervisors, peers, sworn and non-sworn. The city itself is a great organization to work for. I've had opportunities to work with the attorneys, solid waste, parks, HR, again, everybody's been great, even the firefighters. I mean, so that tells you right there, this is a wonderful place to work. I am looking forward to a long career here and again, appreciate the opportunity. And like Seth said, the community's been wonderful as well.
Thank you. Chief?
So with that, I am looking for or asking the commission to move to approve the confirmation of these two officers tonight.
Thank you, Chief Petty. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor. I will move to approve the confirmation of Officer Justin Gibson and Officer Seth Montgomery.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to wish a congratulations to both of you and I'm very grateful that you chose Helena. I think that you're obviously already part of a long line of really excellent public servants that we have within the City of Helena and the Helena Police Department. So excited to see where your career takes off from here and thank you for choosing Helena.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you Officers Gibson and Montgomery for choosing Helena and we thank you for your time and your talent that you're going to put into this and we appreciate your family for the sacrifice of the time with you. And with that, welcome to Helena's finest. Thanks.
Firefighters might not like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly welcome and thank you for your service.
Yeah, I want to thank your families because I know they're the backbone behind you. So thank you, the better half and the wife and the son and everybody. We appreciate you encouraging these officers to be a part of our community and we thank you all for choosing Helena to be a part of and we look forward to continue to work with you. Thanks. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Congratulations. Consent agenda. One motion, A, Claims. It's adjustable. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight we have claims paid from March 1st, 2024 through March 29th, 2024. Checks numbered 198571 through 199107 and EFTs numbered 156 through 171 for a grand total of $3,480,515.64. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? All entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item A, Claims.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Commission proposes? Commissioners, anything? Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager?
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Fire Chief Campbell up to speak to the Leukemia Lymphoma Society Annual Stair Climb Event Results.
You have the floor, Chief Campbell.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for allowing us time to highlight some of the good work our firefighters do when they're not on duty. At 788 feet of vertical elevation, the Columbia Center in downtown Seattle stands as the second tallest building west of the Mississippi, takes 69 floors of stairs, 1,356 steps, to reach the Skyview Observatory overlooking Seattle. On March 10th, 2,000 firefighters from across the United States and around the world ascended the tower to support the mission of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. These participants raised funds for blood cancer research and patient services. This consistently sold-out event is open solely to firefighters who must complete this challenging course while on air. Completing the climb is a physical triumph, but it is also symbolic of, yet pales in comparison to, the strenuous journey the blood cancer patients endure. As firefighters race to the top, they keep in mind that every step forward is representative of moving toward finding a cure for all those battling this terrible disease. Now in its 33rd year, the event has raised over 25 million for Leukemia Lymphoma Society. Here with us tonight are John Gustafson and Steve Reether, who are participants in this event. Guys, if you want to come stand up, say hello. Helena Fire Department's John Gustafson and Stephen Reether participated in Leukemia Lymphoma Society in 2024. This Helena team have earned over 1,000 donations to support blood cancer research and awareness. Steve finished 69th out of over 1,800 racers and completed the climb with a time of 15 minutes 39 seconds. Gus placed 42nd with a time of 14 minutes 53 seconds and tied with one other racer, the oldest participant, with a top 50 finish. Just as a matter of record, they smoked my best time. I can't go down the stairs as fast as these guys go up it. Those seeking more information or wishing to donate can go to lswa.org and we're happy to address any questions the commission may have.
Congratulations. Wow, you did it. Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, my sister is a blood cancer doctor and I told her about this on the agenda and she, as a person who works in this field, is very grateful for events like this. She said it really does mean a lot to the medical professionals who deal with this. So thank you for your participation and I'd like to see you break 14 next year, so we'll be watching. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
If it's acceptable, the commission, Firefighter Gustafson would like to say a couple of words, please.
Yeah, sure.
Mayor, Commission, appreciate it. Thank you. Recognition's tough for us because we're, you know, our profession is inherently selfless and we're humble generally, but recognition is awareness and awareness is support. Blood cancer is something that has affected me personally. My mother, she passed away with blood cancer before I was hired with the Helena Fire Department. So it's kind of a, that's why I climb and I'm honored to be a part of the team and the Helena firefighters that have climbed before me. There's been, it's a tradition in the fire department and there's a little bit of competition and we raised over 30 million dollars and we've, it's been 30 years since it started in 1991 and this is just, this is just an honor and I appreciate it. I'd also especially like to thank Firefighter Reether. After COVID, he picked up the torch. It was tough. They canceled the event and he's been going by himself and he's been participating and he's been representing Helena and I would just like to make note of that. But I appreciate your, you know, your time and the support and just a little bit of, a little extra awareness. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's, did you want to say something, Steve? Please.
Mayor and Commission, thanks for having us tonight. I'd just like to say thank you to Fire Department Chief Campbell for all the support we get for doing the climb and it's for a great cause. I think donations are still open until June 4th, so get out there and still donate some money. I'd like to also thank my family for supporting me and all the training and time we spend doing this event. So, and thanks Gus for coming down with me and it was fun, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you very much for doing this. You give a lot during your daytime and during your job and then to give extra on your off time. It is appreciated, but you can always count on Helena's bravest to answer the call. So thank you very much for what you do.
Where the police? They're not here, okay, you can talk.
I would just echo the rest of the commission's comments and for those that are listening at home, if you do want to donate again, and I think that we've had a really eloquent description of why this is so important, but it is lswa.org. And so I think it would be really great if the entire community of Helena could increase the number of donations on all of your behalf. I was tired just reading the description of the whole event. So congratulations and thanks for all you do to spread awareness.
Let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Madam Clerk, do we have any representative? Oh.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, my name is Anna Kratz. I'm the representative from the Helena Citizens Council tonight and I am just supposed to say, we are organizing budget committee meetings and look forward to the budget presentation in May. Thank you.
Come in some questions for Ms. Kratz. Thanks for your presentation. Regular items. Reconsideration of a sidewalk variance request for Tin Creek Apartment, Twin Creek Apartments, Lot 5A, Block 4 of the Sleeping Giant Edition subdivision, previously considered as Item 9A on March 11, 2024. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So as we discussed the last time, this property is, has right-of-way adjacent to two sides of it. The land is undeveloped. The parcels immediately adjacent to the west and north currently do not have sidewalks. They're, one vacant and one was built at some point that wasn't requiring sidewalks. The development across Dorothy to their east has curbside sidewalk at this time. However, a newer development that was recently built a few years ago, one block west on Alice Street, has the required boulevard sidewalks along that, along its boundaries. And it's just a, again, a block west on Alice. The subject parcel has some telecom and power poles along the west side of the property along Dorothy. We looked at this and believe that if a boulevard sidewalk was installed, we could meander around those poles. Yes, it would narrow the boulevard that would be out there to get around those poles, but it would still provide boulevard out there to provide snow storage and an aesthetic boulevard. I believe the intent of the code is to promote boulevards since allowing variance is the exception. So in this case, we still recommend that the application be denied. We do recognize that the sidewalks along Dorothy are curbside and that potentially, if allowed, the curbside sidewalk along Dorothy may make sense, but as I stated earlier, the code, I believe the intent of the code is to promote boulevard sidewalks throughout the city. And so that is why we're still sticking with our original recommendation to deny the sidewalk placement variance, allowing placement along Dorothy and Alice rights-of-way adjacent to Block 5A and Block, or excuse me, to Lot 5A, Block 4 in the Sleeping Giant Division. There was, there is some stormwater considerations that I should note and Director Leland, if those come up, is available to discuss those in a proposed stormwater plan that they did submit. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I didn't hear you when you said there is, there are some water, stormwater.
There's a stormwater plan that was submitted and if there's questions that come up around that stormwater plan, Director Leland is here to answer those if you have any questions.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps Director Leland could just preempt that and tell us how stormwater relates to the variance request? Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner, as they have submitted a stormwater plan that is taking, you can take the stormwater that is coming onto the property and route it around. You do not need to treat it or run it through your property. You just have to route it around, make sure nothing is being flooded. Some of that coming off of what the Padberry property is to the north is going to be routed around basically where the boulevard is going to be and then be discharged over the sidewalk. So if this is not granted, there's going to have to be some consideration of changing what the stormwater plan is going to be because right now they are showing part of their stormwater drainage to be right where the boulevard sidewalk would be. So there would be some design considerations that we'd have to take into consideration if it is not approved.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up if I might. Thank you. Is there, maybe obvious is the wrong word, is there an alternative to routing it over the sidewalk that is clearly identifiable?
Mayor, Commissioner, there's always ways around it. It would just take some different consideration. We'd have to have a few more meetings to figure out how and what we would really do to get it back out onto the street.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mayor and Commission, thanks for reconsidering this. My name is Ben Tintinger. I'm the principal in charge of this project with Mosaic Architecture. And I want to say I'm all for boulevards and sidewalks. You know, it, they do make sense for piling snow for lots of different reasons, but we have a lot of sites around Helena that they just don't always fit. This particular site is a very tight site for what we're trying to do. We have 72 apartments that are going on that site. There is a, some documents that were sent over, is that right?
Yeah, we have them.
You do have those? Okay, so in that, you'll see that there's some diagrams that show the slope off of Alice Street. So the slope going from Alice Street from the south to the north, it slopes across that site about 18 feet. So we have two buildings that run east and west with parking lot in between. It's very tight in terms of making all the accessible heights that we need between one building and the other building so that we have accessible routes that follow through the site. The building that's on the north, the 48-unit building, is actually held up as far as we can with 10-foot foundation walls on that north side. We're trying, we're going to have a lot of fill that's going into this site in order to make this accessible route work within the site. So that kind of backs up all the way to Alice Street. And what happens at Alice is if we put a boulevard in there, first of all, the boulevard's going to be three foot nine wide, at least as you typically set a sidewalk, one foot from the property line, five-foot sidewalk and then a boulevard, it's only going to be about three foot nine wide. But probably more of a problem is right off the sidewalk, it's going to have to bank significantly in order to hit our drainage that goes around the building and then slope back up to the building. We have to slope away from the building in order to take water away from the building and then route it around the building. So if we have to put the boulevard in, it moves that sidewalk out and it moves that slope so that it's steeper along there. There are cases in Helena precedents where, when you look at the topography of a particular area, that you've granted variances or I assume you've granted variances where that sidewalk has had to go next to the curb because there just wasn't the room to have the boulevard then the sidewalk and then a steep slope. And Reader's Village is a good example of that, where you have boulevard and sidewalk on one side and you have the other side because of the slope, sidewalk and then the train going up the hill. This is a similar site, even though it doesn't, when you go out there and stand, it doesn't look that steep. It really is and it's just a challenge in getting everything that we need to do on that site and meet the accessible standards that we have to have to get into entries from both the north and the south sides of those buildings. We did bring up the reasoning of the power poles being right in the middle of the sidewalk and I get it, those could meander around the poles. So I could understand having the boulevard there. As we go down to where that drainage is, where David and Ryan were talking about it cutting across the sidewalk, it would push that drainage swell closer to the building and it already is close to the building and it would have to be reconfigured a little bit there. So what I could see happening along Dorothy is maybe having the boulevard going around the power poles where we needed to, but when we get to that swell, coming back out again just in that section to allow that swell to go in there. The length of that building, the 48-unit building, makes it such that we're relatively close to the property line and we're leaving enough room to get that swell in there on one side and we're leaving enough room on the other, the west side of it to get water to go around and then we have a stormwater retention area on that side as well. So I guess that's all to say that we have all these little pieces of, and parts of this project that we're trying to make work from a slope standpoint and the sidewalk next to the curb on Alice is part of making that work.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions for?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tintinger. What would be if, would there be any costs, additional costs associated with a meandering or a jog in the sidewalk?
Not really.
And I've got to, I've got to follow.
A small cost, but it's not significant enough.
Mr. Mayor, I've got to follow up as well. With the slope, depending on if it's boulevard or if it's curbside sidewalk, would that pose any challenges with accessibility? any challenges with accessibility from the sidewalk to the parking lot?
Say that again with the...
So with the, with the distance of the sidewalk, if it's, whether it's board, whether it's boulevard or if it's curbside, would it pose any challenges with accessibility for someone coming from the sidewalk to get to?
To get up onto Alice Street?
Either.
Alice Street sidewalk?
Vice versa.
Yeah, not on Dorothy, there wouldn't, on, on Alice Street, what it would do is it would make the sidewalk that's on the west side of the 24-unit building, that's adjacent to the parking lot there that's running north-south. It would make that steeper. Right now, I think it's at 6%, if I recall. It would make it a bit steeper because the intersection with the sidewalk gets a little closer. So it's still accessible, but it's steeper. The sidewalk that's on the, the east side wouldn't slope very much, so that, that would work. I think the bigger concern is the edge of the sidewalk up there, it, it would fall off pretty quickly. You'd have sidewalk, and then it would, it would really go downhill from that. We don't have enough room to kind of taper it out and then fall away. So it's, you know, I, we've seen situations like that in the past, and, and they're not ideal, having a steep slope off of the side of a sidewalk.
Any other comments?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do you have any other public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Burton, my name is Seth O'Connell. I'm the developer on this project, and I was here just a month ago asking you guys for additional Housing Trust Funds. I, believe it or not, I don't love to come here and ask for exceptions and, and handouts, but I just, I wanted to make sure. I also spoke on this, and I think WWC, our civil engineer, might also be online. When we came and asked for additional funding, I did explain building affordable housing is really hard. I think it's probably harder than it's ever been, and it's, it's, a lot of it is market conditions that we can't control. As Director Leland pointed out, the stormwater has been a challenge that we have worked very diligently to solve. In fact, we had to add kind of a flag on the lot to put it on there. And so the first time this variance was denied, I was actually here, and I didn't have sound reason to argue. And in our next design meeting, I said, hey, guys, we just asked the city, our partner in this project, for $400,000 extra dollars, we're going to make this work. And we put our heads together, and we have a great design team with Mosaic, WWC, Golden Eagle, and these guys are, are working diligently to make this project work, and it just, again, it's a case of the right hand communicating with the left hand. I think, I, I understand that variances are denied for a reason, and we have city standards and design standards for a reason. But again, we're asking for an exception for affordable housing, that I hope you guys have the vision, just like you did with the Housing Trust Funds, to see where the benefit of this is long-term, to make it the best project, and to make this design, which is fully baked, we are 80% done with drawings, we are ready to push this thing out for bid, and it's going to be an amazing project, and we just hope that you have the vision to meet us as a partner one more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, I, I live in a neighborhood that has slope and curbside, and unfortunately, and no disrespect to our amazing snowplow drivers, but my sidewalk is buried from the first snow to the last snow, and attempts to shovel it fail because the snowplows come through and it gets buried. There's no place to put it. And given, you know, the affordable housing component and our, our hopes of making it an accessible and walkable area for people who may have limited resources, what is your plan for addressing snow removal on sidewalks if there is no boulevard storage for snow?
That, that's a great question. I live on Rodney Street, I have the same thing. You know, we just basically push snow onto additional sidewalk, there's, there's no boulevard to put it. But in this case, we do have the stormwater slope, which will still work for a place to put snow, you're just basically pushing it the, the other way. And that's already what it's designed for, is to hold that water, so it's going to be basically just pushing it to the north instead of pushing it to the south, or pushing it to the west instead of pushing it to the east, would be my answer to that.
Okay, I see. We have Bryson?
Madam Clerk, would you?
You have the floor, Bryson.
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Hi there, I'm, I'm Bryson Buska. I'm a project manager for Golden Eagle Construction here in town. Been involved in this project pre-construction, working with the team, the folks there just spoke, kind of working through planning and budgets and stuff on this project. And I, I guess I'd just kind of like to echo some of Seth's comments about, you know, the importance of this affordable housing and, and getting this project going to, to provide more housing for, for the City of Helena folks, and, and really kind of express, you know, the challenges that if, if this variance isn't granted, some of the, some of the challenges that that will present, not only from a design standpoint and, and extra time and, and working all that out, but also from a, from a cost standpoint, as, as Seth mentioned, it's already tough enough to, to build affordable housing, and, and I guess I would just echo the, the importance of, you know, getting this variance and being able to kind of lessen the, the overall cost impact on this project as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Higley? You have the floor.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, thanks for letting me speak. I'm with WWC Engineering, part of the design team. I, I guess what I'd like to do is reiterate some of the comments from Mr. Tintiger and Mr. O'Connell. That, that project, the site is pretty complex, and realistically, I think probably one of the bigger things is, you know, trying to go around the overhead power lines, we talked about that, and then just trying to get that stormwater off the site and around the buildings. If we do move it to a boulevard-type situation, the slopes get a lot steeper, and in our opinion, you know, it's not as safe for pedestrians. I think that's really what our point, our opinion is. And it's, if we push it at curbside, you know, there, there, like was said before, there are a number of properties that already have that. I think in this particular situation, we understand the snow removal. I think the developer can certainly make arrangements to get that snow off as it's plowed and move that to the areas where those stormwater channels would be in toward the site. So I think, like I said, we spent a lot of time on the stormwater itself, and it is extremely difficult, given the challenges of the site and how small it is. And anyway, we, you know, to, to make everything work and to make it safer for pedestrians, I, I guess it's our opinion, that's, that's, that's spot for the sidewalk is curbside in this particular location. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Higley.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just really briefly, so I, I wonder if you can maybe talk a little bit more about the safety piece, because I think one of the things, we don't just have boulevards because they are aesthetically pleasing, they improve, you know, home values, they bring beauty to neighborhoods, but we have them because it improves safety, having pedestrians farther from traffic on the street. So I guess, can you maybe talk a little bit more about the pedestrian safety that you are noting?
Yeah, absolutely. Basically, it's just steeper slopes that, that are adjacent to the sidewalk. So when we, when we looked at this and evaluated it, this, if you move it to a boulevard situation, the slopes are definitely steeper than they would be if the, if away, or basically on the side of the sidewalk. So if anybody gets close to that side, especially anybody who's handicapped, that could be somewhat of an issue. And, you know, obviously having lower slopes close to the side of the sidewalk where it ends is a safer situation for pedestrians, especially wear-time conditions as well, when you have ice and other things that are to be considered.
Thanks.
Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Higley.
Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no more public comment online.
Okay. I just want my winter team to motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I am finding the language, give me a moment, please. Can I make a quick comment before I make the motion? Or would you like me to do it after?
No, go ahead.
I am generally opposed to variances on sidewalks. I think I've been fairly clear about that in, in many, many cases. I think they should be exceptions. I am very much in favor of affordable housing. I'm not sure in this case, I believe that the, the housing project itself requires a variance. However, I think, for me, the important part is to build to code always and to improve connectivity and accessibility and walkability in our community. Hearing the piece about pedestrian safety being enhanced by a variance, I'm not sure, I'm solidly convinced, but there's enough there that I, I believe in this case, if it is done in the interest of improved connectivity, to allow people in that neighborhood to have a sidewalk that is more usable, I will overcome my great hesitation, and I will move to approve a sidewalk placement variance, allowing curbside placement along the Dorothy and Alice Street Right Of Ways adjacent to Lot 5A, Block 4 of the Sleeping Giant Edition subdivision. And City Manager, Acting City Attorney Hawkealuk, can I just make the motion to approve the variance, or do I need to move to deny the denial?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, you can simply make the motion to approve.
Cool.
Did you make the motion? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Commissioner Reed's comments, and I really appreciate the additional information from the developer, that was super helpful, and I am glad that we all supported reviewing this again, because I think that was helpful information in, in us making a decision. I am not going to be voting in favor of this. I do want to preface that by saying I'm really excited about this project. I'm excited that the city has, has invested in, in a project that will help bring more housing to families of low-income backgrounds. However, as I mentioned a moment ago, boulevards are, are more than just about bringing beauty to neighborhoods, they are also about safety and providing more space between traffic and pedestrians. They also are critically important in a community like ours for snow storage. I think Commissioner Reed gave a good example of, of lots of places around town, and I mean, we hear it all winter long, particularly on roads that are maintained by the Montana Department of Transportation that don't have boulevard sidewalks. There's just not a lot of place for snow and ice to go. And I think that it's important for us to be even more cognizant of not creating unsafe environments where housing for families of low-income backgrounds is being built, given that historically, families of low-income backgrounds are, are living in, in more unsafe situations and areas. And so I, I think that it's incumbent upon us, particularly on projects like this, that we're thoughtful about ensuring that safety is there from the beginning. I also am concerned about the snow storage. I'm not convinced by the arguments of, you know, there are other areas in town where there are curbside and boulevard. I think Reader's Village is not necessarily an example that, I mean, there is no storage on the other side of the street. In this circumstance, if we allow curbside, there is no stores, no storage anywhere on the street. And so that prompts more concern for me, so I, I will be a, a no on the variance. I am super excited about the project, and I really, you know, I'm excited to see it come to fruition, but the, the safety piece and the snow storage piece are just not areas that I, I can get over, so.
Commissioner, you want a second? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Just thinking out loud, I, I hear both sides. It's, you know, I worry about the traffic calming of having curbside versus boulevard, the safety of our citizens and people living in this area. I, I love this project, I'm so excited for the housing that you all are building over there and the development, the potential, the possibilities that are happening over there, but also too, the snow storage, where I've driven on Broadway right behind the Capitol, and there's snow piled up on, on the road, or up on the sidewalk, and people trying to get through with wheelchairs and walkers, and, you know, there's other areas as well that I've seen where people are struggling to be able to make it. And I'm not saying that this is going to happen all the time up in this area, up on Dorothy or Alice, but I'm, I'm struggling with approving a variance with this as well. But for Acting City Attorney Hawkealuk, do we typically do these after? We're supposed to have our comments after a motion is made and seconded?
Mayor, Commissioner Shertlove? Yes.
Yeah, I figured, okay. I will, with that being said, of course, I'm, I'm going to second, and then, so we can get to the discussion piece of it. Mr. Mayor?
It's been moved and seconded. You can discuss now.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I, I want to be clear that I think safety is a priority and, and snow storage is a challenge. What I would like to see is, you know, I'd like to see sidewalks everywhere, I'd like to see boulevards everywhere, and to the extent that we are not granting a variance for a sidewalk generally, I think we're, we're still getting a sidewalk. And I think, you know, if there are further explanations about other measures that could be taken to minimize interactions with traffic or other safety measures, I would, I would certainly be glad of it. I think in this case, it is, you know, the slope is somewhat compelling, but fundamentally, it doesn't sound like there is a good solution to the boulevard option on one side, and if it is going to cause problems to the project more broadly, that is my concern. If, if there was a way around it, or this was simply a cost-saving measure, I would be far less interested in considering a variance, but if it is truly a design issue, then that is the reason I'm, I'm prepared to grant the variance in this case. So with that, I will simply ask any one of the, the representatives of the project, are there any other measures envisioned to improve the safety of people using that sidewalk if it is granted and it is a curbside sidewalk?
Well, I, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. One, it goes to a commitment from the developer to have those sidewalks plowed, and they have a maintenance shop on-site. In that maintenance shop, they'll have the equipment to get sidewalks plowed all the way around. Assume that's correct, Seth. So that, that is a measure that will help, and I know a lot of the sidewalks that you see that get plowed over, it's... it's, they just don't get maintained. I think the other thing is that Alice Street has the opportunity to be redesigned in the future because there's only half of it there right now. The other half is the Padberry property. And so certainly for the time being, snow could be plowed to the other side, I would guess. But I think that's one way that we can help mitigate it. In terms of the beauty of it, having landscape, we will still have that landscape. We'll still be able to have trees along that side. The trees down Dorothy get a little more problematic just because there's fiber going in where the boulevard is right now, going down that. And there's power poles there. But addressing the safety along Alice Street, if the sidewalk is right next to the curb, I think that can be done with maintenance for one. And then other measures such as warnings and signage. Right now, there's not going to be parking along there per the fire department. So there is a fair amount of space between what would be a parking aisle and a drive aisle. There won't be cars that are parked along there that, you know, kids could sneak through and not be able to be seen, so.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtlove?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to one.
Consider authorization for staff to avoid stale data checks. Director Danusin and/or Andrew Kruzek, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioner, tonight I'm asking the commission's authorization to void 25 stale data checks in the amount of $2,745.66. MCA 7-6-4303 authorizes the commission to void outstanding checks. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. You said $2,000. I think you meant 200?
It should be $2,745.
That's not what we have in here.
That's not what we have. We have $232.57 with an exhibit showing that same amount.
Well, you would have received the most current exhibit. I have and...
Because, yeah, Exhibit A, the total is 232.57.
Okay, I apologize for that. There would have, there might have been a revision done.
Mr. Manager, you want to? Mayor, I would just recommend that the commission table this to the call of the city manager so we can clarify the issue.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table the Item B, consider authorization for staff to void stale data checks.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk? Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Shirtlove?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion to table carries four to zero.
Public hearings, consider, previously tabled, consider a variance to increase the maximum building height from 60 to 92 related to a cellular tower for property in the CLM Zone District with the address of 1414 Orange Avenue. Director Brink, oh, and Planner Kyle Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I do not have a new presentation tonight. I am here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the memo that Director Brink sent to you.
Thank you. Come in. Commissioners, comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to hear from Director Brink regarding the memo sent. It's okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
After the last meeting, I compiled that memo to speak to some of the questions and concerns that were addressed relative to your power and authority under the Federal Telecommunications Act. I put those in the memo, compiled those, and then also ended the memo with your local authority within the NCA and City Code. So you still have a valid process. The health and safety issue, unfortunately for towers, is under the purview of the SEC. You cannot touch or act on any request or condition it based on health, safety relative to radio frequency from those towers.
Thank you, Director. Any other comments from the commission?
Director Brink, I wonder briefly that, I know that there is the letter in our packet from the FAA, but can you maybe just summarize the FAA's position on this?
So the FAA would speak into the impact to the airport, I would imagine. The FAA did review the tower. They did recognize that it is an impediment to the airport. However, they also noted that that tower is there and with proper lighting that continues as it exists today, it should not be any more of an impediment than it is today.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Thank you, Director Brink. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please, come forward. Good evening.
My name is Steve Davis. I do oppose extending this tower. I bought the property, I didn't store it, but the tower was there, I bought the property. And I'm not opposing that. I just don't think it should be extended just because of where it is. It does make property value soar down, how from Real Estate Journal. Couple notes in that. I think you guys might have sent that. Says, first, in the red property, there's several home base stations over 30%. Respondents said that they would reduce the price of their property by more than 20%.
Then they, the tower manufacturer, the tower company that wants to extend this, you know, in their application, they stated a couple of things. It says the extension will create more, no more of an ISO than what already exists. You know, how is that possible if they're going to extend it up? And really unclear about the actual distance because it says, their application says they're extending it 30 feet. I think the total is 17, but I'm not, it's not real clear. But extending it, you know, it already is an ISO, but it's going to make more of an ISO. They also say the tower modification will benefit surround manufacturer business owners and residents. And then it also says, number three, the integrity of adjacent properties would benefit from the enhanced services. You know, I don't understand how it's benefiting the neighbors, you know, with lower property, potential lower property values. And, you know, I think they're telling us what we want to hear. At the last meeting, a representative from the tower said that a crane was not needed. And the crane is not the issue. It's just they told us crane was not needed. On April 3rd, I was contacted by Northwest Tower, Missoula, asking if they could locate the crane on my property. And I told him I, that I heard that a crane was not required to extend the tower. He said the only way it could be done without a crane would be with a helicopter. So I was kind of interested that that was mentioned to us, that a crane was not needed. And in their application, they did not mention about the federally protected birds. You know, that would have been a key point in their application. They have a sign on the gate to their tower that does mention the protocol. Anybody working on that site has to do. So I think that would have been a key piece from them. Does the city really need this extension in the city limits? You know, I think there's way better places for towers than right in the middle of the city. You know, look at, would you want this in your backyard? That's why I'm looking at it. And I've, you know, I'm not talking about any safety. We've already been told that that's not, that's the FAA's problem. But, but other cities would, do not allow this, would not allow this to happen, including Missoula. Missoula Planning Department, I think you guys also might have gotten a copy of that. You know, the cell towers, you know, the stigma with them is getting so bad that they're disguising them so people don't realize that it is a cell tower. There is one, I won't tell the exact address because I don't want to cause open account of worms, but there's one in the vicinity of the Capitol complex that is totally unrecognizable as a cellphone tower. You know, why are they disguising it so bad? I can give you the address. You want to wrap up, sir? Pardon? You pass your two minutes, you go on to four minutes and so. All right, thank you for your consideration. You can wrap up, you don't have to just... Pardon? When I was saying you can wrap up, I didn't mean for you to just leave. That wraps it up, so. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Pamela Lee. I own the property at 2620 North Sanders, right next door to the tower. And I've sent a couple of emails that outlined my concerns. One of them is a safety issue. I know the FAA has signed off saying that it wouldn't be a safety issue per se. They recommend, or the FAA has a list of 50 airports that they have a two-mile buffer zone for 5G towers because of the interference it has with the messaging and like the electronics for the airport. I haven't seen anywhere where our airport signed off on that at all. It's just the FAA. The tower at 1414 Orange is 1.6 miles from the airport. So the two-mile buffer zone, which is recommended from airlines to airports, I mean, that isn't even that far from where it's at. Plus, the tower's in a direct incoming outgoing flight pattern. We see the planes all the time. I sent a photo in one of the emails. The planes are really close to where the tower is right now. If that goes higher, the commercial planes have adjusted their equipment to handle the 5G. The smaller planes have not possibly because some of the older ones. I found a blog where airplane pilots were talking back and forth. Excuse me, I'm running out of air. Are talking back and forth about their equipment going completely dead, losing power of their little planes near 5G towers. So that's a safety concern for us on the ground more so than, I mean, more than it should be. The non-conformities to this tower and the potential that they have adversely affecting the surrounding properties for property value, for the interference with the electronics for the ISO that it is because 5G towers, which is what they're taking it to by going higher, they are more aggressive looking than the current tower. You have all these new businesses that have come in, the new apartment complexes coming in. It just doesn't fit in the neighborhood by going taller. There's nothing else in the neighborhood that's non-compliant. Last but not least is, of course, the birds. Hopefully, they would have the permits to deal with migratory birds that are currently in the tower so that it doesn't happen like last year. That's it. Do you guys have questions?
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. Any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, first, I would like to thank Director Brink and the whole community development staff and the City Attorney's Office for putting together this memo. This was super helpful in better understanding what federal law requires and prevents the city from making determinations on. So this, I mean, it was very helpful to me in better understanding what we can and can't make decisions on and where it comes from. First, I want to say I just want to recognize the public comment. I think this is a good example of one of those things that sometimes can be frustrating for citizens because it is something that clearly is impacting us locally, but we don't necessarily have jurisdiction to do a lot. It's spelled out really well, I think, in this memo. But essentially, the federal government prevents us from being able to make denials to modifications based on some of the issues that have been brought up, like the radio frequency and wildlife airline issues. Because we have, FAA says it's okay. The wildlife should be protected. And if it's not, then there are steps that can be taken. So I understand that this is probably a frustrating thing. And I wish that we could do a better job of addressing your concerns here. But from my understanding of where we are, there's not much we can do beyond approving the variance because of federal law. So I just want to recognize, I hear the public comment. And I would also encourage you to maybe reach out to our congressional delegation because they can do something about federal law. So again, I appreciate all the public comment and appreciate the departments for responding to our request for this memo.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a variance from Section 11-4-2 to increase the maximum building height from 60 feet to 92 feet for a property in CLM Zoning District with legal description of Lot 2A of Dock Number 3305614, located in the northeast quarter of Section 20 Township 10 North Range 3 West PM, Montana, Lewis and Clark County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtlove?
Are we going to do discussion at all or public comment?
You still want to talk, buddy?
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the sentiments and the words that Commissioner Dean mentioned. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 and the Spectrum Act of 2012 kind of tie our hands in this situation with regards to the placement, the height and the, what the city or state can do in this situation. So I've seen the emails that you've all sent and I've heard your words and I understand the concerns. Again, it's, it is a frustrating position to be in. But just know that you have been heard and I do recommend getting hold of your congressional delegation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Commissioner Shirtlove?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to one.
I would like to ask a question from Attorney Hawkealuk. I mean, I know we've all...
I mean, I know we've already voted, but what if this vote had failed? It wouldn't have mattered, would it?
Mayor, Commissioners, if I'm understanding the intent of the question is, what if you were to pass something that were incongruent with federal law?
Right.
Yeah, you know, in that case, there, it depends on how the city would intend to implement it. If the city intended to move forward and truly block something, there would likely be some sort of challenge. And I would predict that unless you could have fitted into those limited criteria in the memo regarding your authority, which as Commissioner Dean indicated would be difficult to do, that a court would likely overturn something that's contrary to federal law.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Any final comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.